I'm Carolyn Wright, Chair of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, and I hereby call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM on this ninth day of February 2021. State of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Governor's executive orders, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended by the Virginia General Assembly, and the School Board's April 7, 2020 Emergency Resolution, the School Board and selected staff members will meet in person at the School Administration Building. However, at this time, it's impractical and unsafe to allow other persons to attend the meeting due to physical distancing and safety precautions related to the pandemic. Members of the public will be able to observe the meeting through live streaming on vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. Madam Clerk, would you kindly take attendance role?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in School Board chambers is Chairwoman Wright, Ms. Melnick, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Manning, Ms. Owens, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems. And attending via Zoom but in the School Administration Building is Ms. Holtz.
Thank you. I now ask all my colleagues to join me in a moment of silence. And please now stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that leads us now to our Student Employee and Public Awards and Recognitions part of the program. And so, Mrs. Melnick, please proceed.
Tonight, we as a board have the pleasure of recognizing Division students and teams who have been awarded or recognized during state, multi-state, or national competitions or events. We continue to honor individuals who awards and recognitions took place since the closure last spring. We appreciate their patience as we work to reinstate these recognitions so it's safe for all parties. With that in mind, we are pleased to announce the School Board recognition recipients for February 2021. Mrs. Holtz.
First, we begin the recognitions with an existing accomplishment from the First Colonial High School Girl Swim Meet. The team won the 5A Girls' State Swimming Championship. This is the first time ever that First Colonial has won the state title for swimming. Previously, the team was the state runner-up during the 2019 season. First Colonial also had one of the smallest number of athletes on the state team, and their fortitude allowed them to overcome the challenge. The team won both the 200 and the 400-yard freestyle relays and secured several other top-eight finishes to round out the championship. Congratulations to the entire team for this exciting first-time win.
Recognition highlights Jacob Cooper from Green Run High School. Jacob was named the Class 5 All-State Player of the Year for 2020 for Boys Basketball. As a junior, he was consistently focused and determined to lead his team to victory. And not only was he the leading scorer for Green Run's basketball team, he was also ranked in the top of the state for assists. Jacob is now captain of the team and is looking forward to another possible state run. After graduation, he plans to continue to play basketball at a four-year institution. Good luck and best wishes, Jacob. We can't wait to see what great things are in your future.
Next up, also from Green Run High, is the Boys Basketball Team. The year 2020 brought many challenges to these young men, but they managed to overcome a mighty way in a mighty way, and the Green Run's High School Boys Basketball Team remains the true definition of stallion strong. Their highlight was the team's crowning as state-level co-champions of VHSL's Class 5 Boys Basketball. This win was the first Boys Basketball State Championship in Green Run history. Coach Kenneth Harris was also honored as VHSL's Class 5 Coach of the Year. To secure this win, the team stuck to their five-point motto: family, hard work, dedication, perseverance, and community. Congratulations on all your hard work, stallions.
Rounding out the wins for Green Run High School is their National Junior ROTC Team. For the eighth consecutive year, the Green Run High School NJ ROTC Program won the Area 5 Championship. Area 5 includes Virginia, Maryland, and Washington DC. Winning this championship qualified the team to attend the Navy Nationals in Florida. Unfortunately, the national event was canceled in 2020 due to COVID-19. However, Green Run's NJ ROTC Team has placed first or second in the national competition for the past four years. Congratulations, everyone, and we can't wait to see what your future NJ ROTC wins.
Our next recognition is for Tommy Baldwin from Princess Anne High School. During the 2019-20 school year, Tommy was named the state champion wrestler for Class 5 at the 152-pound weight class. Tommy has always been a leader in the practice room, helping his teammates and volunteering his time to help Town Center Wrestling Club Youth Program, giving back to a sport he loves. Tommy is a 2020 graduate of Princess Anne High School, and he is now attending Avrit University and wrestling alongside his brother. He is majoring in Education and Sports Management and hopes to coach his own team after college. Tommy has said many times that his keys to success are to never give up, to work harder than anyone else in the room, and to surround yourself with people and coaches who support you to be the best version of yourself, both on and off the mat. We look forward to seeing what the future holds for Tommy and expect big things from him in college. And I'll note that I've been following both Tommy and his brother, and they're both doing great in their wrestling career at Avrit.
All right. Next, also from Princess Anne High School, we are recognizing Azia James. During the 2019-20 school year, then-junior Azia James was named the All-Tide Water Girls' Basketball Player of the Year and was also named the VHSL Girls' Basketball State Class 5 Player of the Year. During the 2020 championship game, she averaged an outstanding 8.7 points, 8.8 rebounds, 4.8 steals, and 2.7 assists per game. We are excited to watch you continue to excel as a student and an athlete. Congratulations to Azia.
Also from Princess Anne High School, we are recognizing Alex Sawyer. Alex was the 1600-meter VHSL Class 5 Indoor Track State Champion in 2020. In addition, Alex won four Region 5A championships in cross-country, indoor, and outdoor track. He also led his team to three Region 5A team championships in cross-country. Alex currently competes for the College of William &amp; Mary. Congratulations on your outstanding accomplishments, Alex.
And as we wrap up our recognitions this month, let's recognize Princess Anne High School's Girls' Basketball Team. The Girls' Basketball Team was named the 2020 VHSL Class 5 State Co-Champions. The final championship game was canceled due to COVID-19, and therefore the two remaining teams were crowned co-champions. This championship was the team's seventh consecutive state title and 11th overall. The team was led by senior Joshua Clinton, who is now attending and playing women's basketball at Temple University. Yay! Joshua was also named Gatorade Player of the Year for 2019-2020. And as mentioned earlier, the Girls' Basketball Player of the Year was also a Princess Anne player, Azia James. Congratulations to all the players for this exciting one.
Madam Chair, this concludes the recognitions for this month. Again, congratulations to everyone who was recognized this evening.
Ditto on that. We're very proud of our student athletes. Okay, this brings us now to the part of the program Code of Ethical and Professional Conduct for members of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach signing. So, the School Board adopted the Code of Ethical and Professional Conduct in 2018. After today's signing, it will remain on, an updated version will remain on display in the School Board chambers. In the interest of safety, we have separate pens for each of you, so you're free to hold on to yours. And we will, we will begin this, for those who choose to sign, beginning with, to my left, Mrs. Felton, working our way across the dais, and then we'll start with this side here, with our members here, and across, and hopefully that'll be pretty straightforward. Okay, thank you all. Adoption of the agenda. Any modifications to this evening's agenda? Okay, hearing none, a motion to-
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The workshop, we have a workshop item that has to be completed after, after our formal meeting.
Yes, ma'am. Women, yes. So, this is where I need to repeat what was shared at the, during our informal meeting, that we are continuing our workshop, which is listed as item number 18. That will be the second workshop topic plan, reopening plan updates. So, for those of you just joining us now, you haven't missed anything. We, we will be beginning that from the, from the start. So, with that modification, motion to approve, Ms. Owens, and a second, Mrs. Manning. All in favor, show a raised hand, please.
Ms. Holtz, how do you vote?
She might not be back there yet.
Shall we ask one more time? Ms. Holtz, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you all. Okay, so Dr. Spence, we now look forward to your superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening to you and members of our School Board. Here are a few items of interest for you and our families to know this evening. To start, just as a quick reminder, all schools and offices will be closed for all staff and students on Monday, February 15, in recognition of President's Day. Next up, February is School Board Appreciation Month, and with that in mind, I would like to take a moment to recognize the outstanding work of our School Board. Over this past year, almost, you have worked diligently together to support our children, honor our staff, and respect our community in the midst of this global pandemic. Although the conversations have not always been easy, our Division would not be as strong without the continued guidance and support and governance offered by you all. Of course, with that, each year, the Division does work to recognize the Board in a creative way, and I can assure you all, this year will be no different. Make sure that you tune into our next regularly scheduled meeting, February 23, for more. So, again, thank you all for your continued work and support. At number three, in honor of Virginia Kindness Week, the Virginia Department of Education is encouraging students and staff to promote and celebrate kindness during the week of February 14 through the 20th. The purpose of Kindness Week is to recognize that simple day-to-day acts of kindness enable our schools, communities, and state to be a kinder, safer, healthier, and more inclusive place to live, work, learn, and play. By promoting kindness, we are promoting inclusivity by extending an opportunity for grace and empathy, dignity, and acceptance all across the state of Virginia. Share your acts of kindness using hashtag VBkind or hashtag VAisforKindness. And finally, this evening, I would like to give an update on the Division's Beach Bags Program. As you all probably know, the Beach Bags Program provides shelf-stable meals and healthy snacks to students who might otherwise go hungry during weekends and over extended school breaks. Since this program was founded in 2009, more than 154,000 beach bags have been distributed, and the support offered by this amazing program continues. In fact, since September 2020, more than 10,500 beach bags filled with shelf-stable items have been distributed to students in need, and more bags continue to be distributed each week. The efforts of this program would not be possible without the generous donations from our community. 100% of our community's monetary donations is used to purchase food for students in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. To donate, please call 757-263-1949, or visit www.vbf.org. That's the Virginia Beach Education Foundation website. And be on the lookout for upcoming information about the Beach Bags Food Drive, which is planned for March 25 at Pembroke Mall. Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my report.
Thank you, as always, Dr. Spence. All right, Agenda Item 9, Public Hearing on Fiscal Year 2021-22 Operating Budget and Fiscal Year 2021-22 through 2026-27 Capital Improvement Program. The School Board will now hear public comment on the Fiscal Year 2021-22 School Operating Budget and the Fiscal Year 21-22 through Fiscal Year 26-27 Capital Improvement Program. As a reminder, our speaker has four minutes to present and will be given a 30-second warning before time expires. Madam Clerk, would you introduce our speaker, please?
Thank you. Our first speaker is Kelly Walker. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Hi, Vice Chairwoman Melnick, Superintendent Spence, and members of the School Board. My name is Kelly Walker, and I serve as the President of the Virginia Beach Education Association, and I am here this evening to comment on the Superintendent's Estimate of Needs presented last week. By now, you have all received the updated VBEA 10-Year Review of the Virginia Beach City Public Schools Instructional Pay Scale. The study provides an analysis of the instructional scale in comparison to not only the state of Virginia, but reports on local trends germane to the instructional pay scale from 2009 to 2020. We analyze a variety of factors that influence the take-home pay of employees on the instructional scale and found that average teacher's salary, as a function of experience, has decreased relative to the state. In fact, we now lag behind the Virginia State average by $3,756. Let me remind the Board that Virginia ranks 32nd among the 50 states in average teacher pay. This trend alone does not incentivize educators to teach at the beach. Furthermore, VBCPS pays more at the front of the instructional pay scale. However, teachers rapidly fall behind over the course of their career. In fact, as we combined data from 2020, we found that this trend continues. The HR report given to the School Board in December shows that after five years of service, 56% of new teachers will leave the Division, which is an increase of 1% from last year. Furthermore, the pandemic has accelerated the number of teachers who have retired or resigned from VBCPS. From July to November 2019, 92 teachers retired or resigned. In comparison, this year, we lost 210 teachers. VBCPS normally hires on average 219 teachers with experience a year. This year, only 122. And the numbers do not lie and signal that the teacher shortage is real and demands that we take a long, deep look at the budget to find solutions to this problem. The VBA Board of Directors appreciates the work of the School Board, the Superintendent, and the Administration in addressing many of the HR budget requests and for the 4.5% cost-of-living adjustment, or the COLA. However, we ask that the School Board look to incorporate all of the HR budget requests if possible, especially consolidating the teacher-assistance scale. Our teacher assistants have worked to ensure our students receive what they need during the pandemic, whether it is support for a lesson, cleaning a classroom, delivering a meal, providing social-emotional needs, or monitoring students in the learning centers. Through the consolidation of the teacher-assistance step scale, our teacher assistants would feel valued for the important work they do for our school division. Finally, I would like to remind the School Board that a cost-of-living adjustment, or a COLA, is not a raise. Inflation has increased 20% over the past 10 years, while teacher pay has increased by only 8%. Include the mandatory 5% of pay by paid by each employee to VRS, teachers have only received 3%. This is why the average teacher's salary is $3,316 below the per-capita income in Virginia Beach. And I will leave you with this final data point. The current step scale lists a 0.5% increase in pay for each year of service. This means that a teacher at step zero in $2020 may expect to receive $7,471 over the course of a 30-year career. The scale does not value educators. Frankly, Virginia Beach is a city where educators cannot afford to live where they work. It is time to decouple the cost-of-living adjustments, or the COLA, from years of service on our pay scales. Only in this way will we be competitive in attracting and retaining educators to the profession. Market forces, coupled with the pandemic, have left us once again on the short end of the stick. It is time to be proactive in our efforts to show our employees we value them by adjusting the pay scales of all educators in the Division. Thank you for your time.
Madam Chair, our next speaker had to cancel, so that is the end of the public speakers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Approval of meeting minutes. We have two sets of minutes tonight. So, we will begin with the January 19 Special School Board Meeting. Any modification to these minutes? Okay, hearing none. Chair will accept a motion to approve. Mrs. Anderson, a second. Mrs. Hughes, discussion. Okay, please show your approval with a raised hand.
Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. So, now the January 26 regular School Board Meeting. Again, Chair will ask if any modifications. Hearing none, a motion to approve. Mrs. Riggs, a second. Mrs. Weems, discussion. Please show your approval with raised hand.
We have 10 ayes. Ms. Manning, how do you vote?
I'm abstaining. I missed a portion of the retreat portion, and council advised that I should abstain.
Thank you. It is duly noted. So, the motion did approve, did pass.
Thank you. So, now, hearing of citizens and delegations on agenda items. The School Board will now hear comments on agenda items from citizens and delegations.
Pardon me, Madam Chair. The speaker who was signed up to speak-
You know why I was pausing, okay.
-decided to cancel, so we can move on to the next item on the agenda.
Thank you. So, that brings us now to the consent agenda portion of the agenda. So, all this, this list that I'm about to read, everything has been presented previously in, under information in previous School Board meetings. A, new courses, dual enrollment, Business 100, DE Introduction to Business, Business 117 DE, Leadership Development. Two, under new courses, African-American History elective. B, textbook adoptions. One, AP French Language and Culture. Two, AP German Language and Culture. Three, AP Spanish Language and Culture. Four, AP Spanish Literature and Culture. Five, AP Biology. Six, AP Physics 1 and 2. C, our recommendations of the general contractor for Thalia Elementary School Fire Alarm Replacement. The only one in that category. And finally, D, two policy review recommendations, Policy 436 Payroll Deductions, and two, Policy 432 Employee Associations. Motion to approve. Mrs. Manning, a second. Mrs. Anderson. So, all in favor, show a raised hand, please.
Madam Chair, we have unanimous vote.
Thank you, and I'm sure all the staff who worked hard on all those textbooks recommendations will be happy to, to see this. All right, action portion of the agenda. Personnel report, administrative appointments, which have been shared on the SharePoint site previously. Motion to approve. Mrs. Melnick, a second. Mrs. Riggs, discussion. Okay, hearing none, seeing none. Chair entertains motion for the vote. Please show your approval with a raised hand.
Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. And Dr. Spence, would you care to introduce some of our new appointments?
Yes, ma'am. Just one this evening. It's, I'd like to recognize Dr. Noel Williams. Dr. Williams has served as a teacher in Fairfax County in Newport News. She's been a research assistant and adjunct faculty at the College of William &amp; Mary. She's been most recently serving as research associate at Schaefer Evaluation Group, and we're pleased this evening that you've accepted our recommendation for Dr. Williams to serve as the next program evaluation specialist in the Office of Planning, Innovation, and Accountability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We congratulate the doctor and all our new appointees. So, that brings us to information. Greenhouse gas emissions update, facilities briefing, and we will begin with Mr. Tony Arnold. Welcome.
Dr. Spence, Jack Freeman, our Chief Operations Officer, is unable to be with us this evening.
Let me try that again.
Let me try that again.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, and Dr. Spence. It's great to be here. Jack Freeman, our Chief Operations Officer, is not going to be able to join us this evening, and we've, as a result, we're going to make a little adjustment to this agenda item. It was originally included two parts. We're going to go ahead with the greenhouse gas emissions update, and we will defer the facilities briefing to a, to a future Board meeting date. I've got with me Tim Cole, our Sustainability Officer, and joining us remotely is Brenna Dunn. And joining us remotely is Brenna Dunn, the Director of Sustainability with Mosley Architects. Brenna will handle the lion chair of the presentation. Our first initial greenhouse gas emissions inventory was published in two thousand and eleven. It's hard for me to believe that it's been a decade. And that inventory was based on a baseline year of two thousand and six through two thousand and ten. We subsequently developed an emissions reduction plan that was developed in two thousand and fourteen. And we were actually scheduled to present this last spring. We've obviously had to postpone that. And so what I'm going to do at this time is turn it over to Brenna Dunn, who is going to walk you through the PowerPoint remotely. And then Tim and I will be here to assist with any questions that board members may have. Thank you very much.
Ms. Dunn. This is Carolyn Rye, Chair, and welcome on behalf of me and my colleagues.
Thank you. And can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful. Well, good evening, and thank you for having me this evening. For the next few minutes, I'm going to be sharing with you the results of the greenhouse gas inventory and emissions reduction plan update that was completed in late two thousand nineteen. These reports couldn't have been completed without the hard work of the Sustainable Schools Committee, so I'd like to acknowledge them now and thank them also for their hard work. The Sustainable Schools Committee developed and has used these three guiding principles in their work for more than a decade now. Although these principles are short and simple statements, they have had a distinctly positive impact on the performance of your building portfolio, the student experience, and the general public in Virginia Beach. I want to pause a moment here and reflect on why the focus on carbon emissions. Concerns about carbon and its link to climate change has been studied for decades. The Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change is one of the premier authorities, an international organization with thousands of scientists working on this very issue. To the left-hand side of this slide, you'll see two statements from the IPCC that are geared specifically towards policymakers like yourselves. I've highlighted a few portions of these statements that I really wanted to jump out at you. At the more local level, we've also been feeling the impacts of climate change right here at home in Virginia, and particularly in our coastal communities. There have been a number of executive orders over the years dealing with energy, climate, and resilience. The most recent is Executive Order forty-three, which sets out some very ambitious goals, as I've summarized over to the right. Virginia Beach City Public Schools has quite literally been charting the course when it comes to addressing the important issues of energy conservation and carbon reduction. To my knowledge, you are the first division to have completed a comprehensive greenhouse gas inventory and emissions reduction plan, and I've only come across one other since your effort began a decade ago. Over the last decade, you've made tremendous progress by setting a baseline year, publishing two inventories, publishing two sustainability reports, and publishing an emissions reduction plan with a five-year update. And the team has our sights set on publishing a third sustainability report this year. So we're going to switch gears now and move into the greenhouse gas inventory findings. Before I review the findings of the greenhouse gas inventory update, I'd first like to offer a visualization of what a metric ton of carbon dioxide would look like if it were a solid instead of a gas floating in our atmosphere. When we report carbon emissions, we do so in metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalents. I've placed a metric ton of carbon dioxide on a high school football field for scale. We call them carbon dioxide equivalents because there are other greenhouse gases besides carbon dioxide, like sulfur hexafluoride, methane, hydrofluorocarbons, and perfluorocarbons that also contribute to climate change. In greenhouse gas inventories, these gases' global warming potential is normalized to a carbon equivalent so that we have a standard unit of measurement. We also, in a greenhouse gas inventory, categorize the source of these emissions. Sometimes, we are emitting these pollutants directly, like when burning fuels on-site or in our fleets. We call those scope-one emissions. Sometimes, we need energy that somebody else produces for us, like when we purchase electricity from a utility. We call those scope-two emissions. And sometimes, emissions happen just because we exist, like people drive to and from our facility or we send our waste to a landfill that emits methane. Those external emissions are called scope-three emissions. It is important to remember that your scope-two and three emissions are somebody else's scope-one emissions. In terms of the inventory that we conducted in two thousand sixteen, just as with the first inventory, we included all of the buildings under the school division's operational control. That includes all of the administration and alternative education buildings listed here, as well as all of your K-12 schools. The first inventory spanned the years two thousand six to two thousand and ten, while the second inventory was just a snapshot in time for two thousand sixteen. As you can see in this graph, there is a steady downward trend in emissions from the two thousand six baseline year through the two thousand sixteen ten-year snapshot year. The net decrease from two thousand six to two thousand sixteen was forty-seven-point-five-thousand metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. This is a twenty-nine percent reduction, which is equivalent to removing just over ten thousand passenger vehicles from the road for one year, or equivalent to taking over five thousand single-family homes off the grid for a full year. I'd like to say congratulations for your commitment, your leadership, and your success in this endeavor. Since scope-one, two, and three isn't always a natural way to look at emissions, we decided to change the lens and also look at the data from a building, bus fleet, and commuting perspective. You have direct control over building and school buses, which is a good portion of this pie chart, and you do have a degree of influence over commuting behaviors. In case you were wondering what is included in each category, buildings equal natural gas, electricity, and the transmission and distribution losses associated with getting that electricity from the power plant to your buildings. The school bus category includes all the emissions of school buses arrived, or students arriving by school buses. And then commuting would be all of your staff and students arriving by car. Now let's move into the next portion, which is the emissions reduction plan. The emissions reduction plan was developed with both operational and educational components. The twenty-two actionable objectives within the operational portion of the plan were divided into four primary categories, as shown here. Operations and maintenance, transportation, consumption and waste disposal, and school grounds. The five-year review of the emissions reduction plan was very encouraging, confirming that just about three-quarters of the actionable objectives in the plan were either complete or well underway. The next few slides provide a few highlights to give you a feel of how some of these objectives are being implemented within the school division. An example of an operational objective within the operations and maintenance section of the plan included implementing a policy that all new facilities be designed with a plan for future conversion to net-zero energy. The first school to comply with this policy was Old donation school in two thousand seventeen, and several schools have followed suit subsequently. The transportation section of the plan included a focus on both fuel consumption and fuel types for both the white fleet and the yellow fleet. As you can see here, progress is being made in decreasing fuel consumption and also looking at transportation technologies that use cleaner burning fuels. As transportation technologies are rapidly changing, the full implementation of these objectives will likely be ongoing. One of the objectives under the consumption and waste disposal section was to develop a more sustainable food system to increase local food procurement by thirty percent by two thousand and thirty when compared to two thousand and nine levels. You can see from this bullet list that a number of initiatives are already underway to meet this objective, and it is anticipated that the new programs will be brought online over the coming decade. In the school grounds section, one of the objectives was to increase the meadow management program at school sites, which sequesters carbon and provides enhanced levels of rainwater management, protects wildlife, increases biodiversity, and reduces labor and emissions associated with landscape maintenance. The Sustainable Schools Committee found that the managed meadow area has been increased by almost ten acres since the emissions reduction plan first set this goal. Another objective was to increase the tree canopy coverage at school sites by thirteen percent over the next twenty years. In the first five years, tree canopy coverage has increased by three-and-a-half percent. So if you're able to keep this pace, then the target will be met. There are a lot of success stories to share and to celebrate, but there are also some objectives that still need attention. I'd like to draw a few of those to your attention as well. In particular, the objectives of eliminating unnecessary administrative waste and increasing reuse were possible. Developing a food composting program and increasing diversion of recyclables from the waste stream all need attention. These are initiatives that either haven't been started or have become stagnant and need focused attention to meet long-term goals. The educational portion of the plan was divided into just two sections, as shown on this slide, and was comprised of a total of thirteen educational objectives. The five-year review of the emissions reduction plan was also very encouraging on the educational side, confirming that almost two-thirds of the actionable items in the plan were either complete or underway. Again, I've included a few slides to provide some highlights to give you a feel of how some of these objectives are being implemented within the school division. The first of the educational objectives is to develop and promote new courses relevant to sustainability issues. Although this will be an ongoing task, it has already been accomplished in any number of ways, including the new classroom at the Brock Environmental Center and the development of a new environmental studies course at the high school level, participation in the downstream collaborative at the elementary level, and of course, the opportunity for students to participate in meaningful watershed educational experiences. Another objective is to provide opportunities for students to participate in sustainability leadership experiences, which is supported through senior year internship and research projects. Two other examples of educational initiatives include developing a sustainability science fair and offering rewards for sustainable behavior. The science fair objective is being accomplished both through the Tidewater Science and Engineering Fair for sixth through twelfth graders, and the ONET Watershed Competition. And the Sustainable Schools Recognition Awards Program has been going strong and growing for many years now. As with the operational objectives, there are a lot of educational success stories to share and to celebrate, but there are also some objectives that still need attention. I'd like to draw a few of those to your attention as well. A few of the more pressing include the need to develop a sustainability competency criteria, the need to develop an online library of sustainability resources, the need to create a sustainability handbook and pledge, and the need to monitor School Board Policy three-sixty-seven, which is the policy regarding environmentally sustainable practices. And finally, a word on the sustainability report. Just to wrap up, I wanted to touch very briefly on the upcoming sustainability report last published in two thousand and fifteen. The two thousand and twenty-one update will be another snapshot of sustainability success stories at Virginia Beach City Public Schools, including lead-for-schools highlights, an overview of emissions reduction measures, attention on support services and community partners, and of course, the spotlight on sustainability in the classroom. With that, I think Mr. Arnold is available for any questions, as am I.
Thank you, Brenna. Obviously, we have, and you have, in the school division, has accomplished an awful lot in the past fifteen years. I really look forward to, when Mr. Freeman comes back, you will see some of the economic outcomes associated with a lot of this work that's been going on behind the scenes in terms of not only how we design and construct our buildings, how we operate and maintain them, some of the energy performance contracting work that we've done over the course of the past decade. The cost avoidance from a utility infrastructure perspective is really, really significant. So it's something that we're all proud of. And with that, Tim and I are here, and Brenna is available to answer any questions that board members may have. Thank you very much.
Colleagues, Mrs. Melnick.
I really don't want to, like, sit silent. I really want to be jumping up and down. Like, this is so exciting and so wonderful, and we are really doing an incredible job to make a difference because we all understand the importance. Climate change is real, and it's not stopping, but we can at least do our part to help slow it down. Mr. Arnold, in the operational objectives needing attention, any suggestions how you might tackle the three?
I'll let the resident expert handle that.
That's what I was thinking.
On the operational objectives that are needing attention, right there?
Yes.
So, you know, a lot of that kind of falls on me, on not really pushing some folks in different departments to kind of, we need to bring everybody together to develop probably a plan and a way to kind of determine whether someone is, from a sustainability perspective, you know, how that ties in with curriculum and as far as how we're tracking successes, as far as that goes, and what we're doing from a curriculum perspective. So it's just a matter of us bringing people together, I think, and forming some of those work groups. So we have a plan.
Yes, it is something so easy to take for granted, so I echo Mrs. Melnick's comments. In what way has the pandemic impacted any? Is there any particular segments of this that you could share with us as to how the pandemic has impacted in the past twelve months, these efforts?
I think we've had a lot of discussions about the impact that this will have on the built environment, and maybe we start looking at some things a little differently. We've been having some discussions around things like the Environmental Studies Program and how we might combine online learning with site learning. And I, so I think ultimately, you'll see that probably has an impact maybe on square footage requirements for larger, you know, for high schools and stuff like that when we get a little smarter about the way we design and operate the buildings.
And Mr. Arnold, you're getting up, so.
Yeah, also, we're obviously, buildings are not occupied, and at least not to their full capacity. And so we have seen the data over the past ten or eleven months where our consumption is down. And so, you know, it's a, this is a year that, across the board, where utility consumption is down, and we see that impact on the operating budget. So we've, it's not, I mean, it's a good data year in terms of dollars. It's not something we've just got to be mindful of as we continue to measure this against our goals. But yes, when your buildings aren't occupied, you're not using as much in terms of energy and utilities.
Thank you, gentlemen both. Anybody else? Mrs. Anderson.
Just a thought. One of the things that we've discovered is that there's been a need, when we have students in the schools right now, of some outdoor spaces for students. And any thoughts on when you're designing future schools and putting some design into the fact that you might need to open up a part of the room to another part so that you can, I mean, is that possibility?
It is, and it's been done and is being done. The, really, the best example of that is the Old donation school. And you can, during, I call it organized educational chaos. During the normal school day, you go to that school building inside and out, and there are students learning outside. We have wireless access points set up outside as part of the design and construction of the building. You'll see the same opportunities at the New Princeton Middle School. You see them at the new Callum High School, which is not new anymore, it's seven years old. So we have been doing that, but working together with our David and our technology folks, we're paying a lot more attention to that in our older assets as well. You know, we're fortunate to live in a really mild climate. And so for the majority of the months that we're in school, there are opportunities for kids to go outside and learn and do things that are outside of the built environment. And so, yes, that's something that, that has brought that to everyone's attention, the need to get outside more. And, you know, you can learn in an educational courtyard. I think you guys, we're going to set up a tour for y'all at the New PA Middle School later this spring. And I think if you pay attention to some of the aerial photographs over time, you will see the outdoor learning environment being built before your eyes from month to month. And we're starting to see those site elements being constructed. And so there'll be a great example there this coming spring.
Because I was primarily interested in, you know, envisioning some covered spaces that are considered outdoors but yet have a cover over them, so.
Definitely, definitely something that we're paying a lot of attention to.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We look forward to the second component of this, and I suspect that might generate more questions relating to what you just shared tonight at that.
more questions relating to what you just shared tonight at that time.
Yes, ma'am.
So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, standing committee reports, who would like to begin?
Yes, we've had a couple planning and performance monitoring committees since my last report. I believe we've had two. We, of course, surveyed the colleagues for your input on the budget, which was able to be a great help, I think, to Farrell and Dr. Spence as far as guiding them to their, to the superintendent's estimate of needs. And then also, we did put on the table to discuss the budget calendar, because one of the colleagues suggested that. It was too late to do that for this year since we voted for the calendar already, but we'll be looking at the, just the timeline of the budget calendar for next year to make sure that we're giving the public and us enough time between budget sessions to get input and to make sure the public has enough time to digest everything as well. Also, Dr. Bannike gave us a presentation on the Innovation Charter, which is very interesting. And you know, Lisa, this is her favorite place to be. She's just great at explaining all this, and it was very interesting. We had a few questions, Dottie and Sharon and I, and she will be presenting that to the School Board in a workshop. And it's all about, we as a school system, of course, have always been innovators, but this is just kind of putting it into a document and a charter and language so that the public can see as we move forward. So that's for PPMC. Also, I attended the Special Education Advisory Committee yesterday. Kami presented a session on restraints and seclusion from the federal and state guidelines. And then also, Dr. Pasternak talked about, gave us a presentation on inclusion and best practices, and the CAC Committee would really, has asked me to ask if we could maybe have a workshop for the School Board that really talks about inclusion and to let them know also the training that we've put forth for our general education teachers in the special ed, to train them in special education practices. So I will talk to Agenda Planning tomorrow and Dr. Spence about perhaps getting that on one of our special education workshops, the whole inclusion piece. So, thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Mrs. Felton?
Thank you, Chair Rye. As the newly elected Chair of the School Board's Legislative Committee, I would like to report that the Legislative Committee met last week to discuss the status of the Twenty Twenty-One General Assembly Session last Friday, which was February the fifth, can you hear me? Okay. February the fifth, was crossed over time, which is the day that bills and resolution must clear each House of the General Assembly to be considered by the House. The Legislative Committee, along with Joel Andrus, the School Board's Legislative Consultant, are actively monitoring bills that will affect the School Board. The Governor has called for a special session that will begin tomorrow, February the tenth, and will continue work on the pending bills as well as the budget. We will keep the School Board informed of the progress of those bills. I would like to welcome Ms. Mannings, who was our newest member of the committee, and to thank Ms. Trinace Rigs to continue her services on the team. On behalf of the Legislative Committee, I would like to thank you, Ms. Melnick, for your many years of leadership as the Chair of the Legislative Committee. Thank you so much. Also, I attended the General Advisory Council for Career and Technology, and they had several components, it's several components of this committee promoting the success of our students. And they presented five levels of sustainable paths that our students can take to be a productive citizen. It was a robust meeting. I was just excited about all the things that they brought to the table, and I could go much longer, but I just want to name a few. We talked about family consumer science, and through this program, if you all know Ms. Rachel Ray, who is a famous chef, she showed up the Corporate Landing Middle School just to give them a cheer on and to be successful. And we've had other, what we call them famous, come into the school and talk with the students this year, virtual. February, we was one of those as well. I asked Dr. Spence about our nursing program, and we were talking about having shortages of nurses and not being, not having enough. And I know for the last past five years, I have attended our nursing graduation class, and I'm always, always come away with a deep sense of revelation about this program. But I just wanted to report to you that our nurses from our nursing program, they are assisting the Centera Clinic with the COVID initiative. But what they're doing, they're taking registration and other data processing. They did not meet the, not because you're incapable, they're capable, but they did not meet the criteria to give the extra shots. But our students out there, and they're working hard. Also, our ATC partnership with Virginia Tech have created a robotic gardener that can actually go on level land and help sustain gardens. So our students are doing a lot of great things. Also with this, with ATC, they have two cohorts implementing coding for elementary and middle school. That's the first cohort, and the second cohort is for the high school students. We are doing great works with our students, and our GAC program is building our students to move from career or to college. When they go through these programs, they either come up prepared to go to college or they're standing on their own to go to, to create their own career. But Ms. Lockit brought up a good point, and I hope that some of you all take into consideration. She's moving progressively to some less, more private partners and community to give our students those ability to get internships. And no one know better than I do that internships mean a lot when a student can go out and work with companies that they aspire to be in, because they're some of the first ones that they look at. And I want to say that Kentsville Entrepreneur Business School is, things are doing it as well. But you know, things sort of kind of settle down. We just want to make sure that our students get every, every chance that they can to be successful. I'll pull back and listen when I speak, and I'll come back later. Thank you.
Was that Ms. Owen's hand?
Thank you. Just wanted to give an update for the Equity Council that met on February fourth. Basically, we had a couple presentations. We got to hear about the Black History Program, which is reflection of a legacy building for the present through persistence, perseverance, and pride. The program was open to grades six through twelve, and we had one of our students, Lauren, unfortunately, I don't know her last name, present to us a little bit about a session that she was doing, which was hesitating to let your light shine. And it's a session that was encouraging minority students to pursue AP classes and letting your gifts, talents, and skills emerge. She is a student who does AP classes and is able to succeed and wants to be able to share that inspiration with other students. That program was November sixth, so that was this past Saturday. There was also...
February.
Thank you. February sixth, February, Saturday, February sixth. Just for students and the public to be aware, there is a YWCA racial justice scholarship that closes February twenty-sixth. The Council got a presentation from Mr. Freeman in regards to vaccination and progress. There was some initial discussion about the need to continue to have the conversation in minority communities to dispel fears and encourage the most participation in the vaccination process as we can. We had a presentation from Dr. Amelia Hammond Ross with the Virginia African American Cultural Center, and basically got to hear some of what is up and coming from the Cultural Center for the community and for the city as a whole. There's an upcoming presentation opportunity that's open to the public on February twenty-fourth, and that's being hosted by the Prince of Sand County Training School, Union Kentsville High School Association. And for those who aren't aware, that is Virginia Beach's black high school prior to integration. They are having a Black History Month program, the Black Family, Representation, Identity, and Diversity. That program is going to be in partnership with the City of Virginia Beach Cultural Affairs and Norfolk State University, and it's going to be from noon to two PM via Zoom. So anybody who's interested in participating can find more details on vbgov.com, and that, again, is going to be the February the twenty-fourth. And the Equity Council will not be meeting in March. In lieu of our meeting, we'll be participating in focus groups as part of the equity audit that is already underway.
Thank you. Mrs. Franklin?
So last night, we had a meeting of the Gifted Community Advisory Committee, and we just want to remind everybody that these meetings are open to the public, to the community. And we were lucky enough to have Dr. Parrott there talking about the Senatoring Equity Initiative. And basically, she just outlined, you know, the timeline, July of 2020, Dr. Spence allowed her to have an administrative assistant for the diversity office. And then in November 2020, they hired a Coordinator of Equity and Opportunity. So right now, their office actually holds three people. And today, she actually recognized two School Board members, Sharon Felton and Jessica Owens, for driving some action with, you know, wanting some policy in place to direct that action. Quality Measures were hired to provide data collection. And then I was really excited to hear about some of the programs we actually have in the community, one being Beach Girls Rock, which is from third to eighth grade, and that's sponsored by high school students. So I love that we have the students actually helping some of the younger students as well. Diversity Ambassador's Workshop opened to middle school students, and I Am the Dream Annual African American Male Summit, which is open for grades six through twelve. So I think personally, I would love to see some of these programs actually more, you know, more put out there in the community so we can make sure that more people are participating in those. And then Dr. Deveries just actually was able to give a update as well. If you remember, the School Board actually did vote on allowing them to use the COGAT testing as opposed to the Magliari testing. And what was really exciting, in two weeks, they actually got approval from us, the School Board, and then they also got the purchase order through. So that's a pretty quick timeline, I guess, in government work to be able to accomplish all that. And they actually started to train. So with the help of their gifted resource teachers, they already were able to get some of the first grade testing done. And then two sixteen, February sixteen through February twenty-six, they're going to start up with the sixth graders, and then seventh and eighth graders will be provided when they come back. So, and then I just want to tell you that they also had some other speakers as well, but this is such an amazing group of people. I just thanked them at the end for their passion and for their professionalism and their, you know, just their passion for what they do. I'm just so impressed with this group that we have available to us at BBCBS, so I was very impressed with them.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and share three quick governance updates. It was noted, believe it or not, we've already started with some preliminary discussion on our summer retreat, and just noting for the record here now that the, it is July sixth and seventh are the retreat dates, as noted on the school calendar that was approved by you all in January. So, you know, much more on that to follow. In terms of work, the next work plan of sorts, Board Self-Evaluation was one of the hanging fruit items when the Board was, when this committee was created. So you'll be hearing more about that in the coming weeks and months. And finally, we welcomed our newest member, Mrs. Melnick, who now serves in her capacity as the new Audit Chair. And if I may, just to piggyback on Ms. Owens' remarks about the Black History Summit last Saturday morning, just a shout out to Dr. Parrott, Dr. Lindsay Law from our Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, clearly so much preparation. And a special shout out, too, to our Councilman, Aaron Rouse, who gave quite a compelling personal, shared quite a compelling personal story in the opening session. And finally, too, a very special lady was honored that morning. It was really all a special tribute, Ms. Lily Trotman, who just celebrated, well, let's just say the birthday number was three digits plus one. And she is the last surviving member of the Union Kentsville graduating, hold me, nineteen thirty-eight is the year, help me out with the...
It's the Prince of Sand County Training School. She's the last surviving person to be there.
Of that group. And I had the pleasure a few weeks ago of actually visiting outside her home on her birthday and got to meet, and I don't want to misspeak, but she has six or seven adult children, one deceased, but a beautiful family, and I told them, they're all also trailblazers in their own right, because they all came of age in this city during the original year, the initial years of integration. So, anybody else? Chair Rye? Yes, ma'am.
And I'm going to end with this. Yes, I would like to, as the Vice Chair of the Tidewater Regional VSB, I would like to invite you, my colleagues, to the VSB Tidewater Regional Spring Networking Forum. It's going to be virtual, it's going to be March the twenty-ninth. You will be receiving an invite from the department. I would encourage you to come. It would be nice, quite a few of our individuals from Virginia Beach City Public Schools will be there. I'm so honored that Mr. Chris Bruner has taken on the task of being the lead judge for the art for this year. And I am so impressed with the students and the art that they bring. Everything will be virtual, even the art exhibit will be virtual as well. So look out for that invite to the VSB Tidewater Regional Spring Networking Forum. It will all be virtual. Also, I'd like to share with my, with my colleagues that VSB is coming up with quite a few hot topics, and they're going to be given in a conference forum. I do not want to overload your email, and you might get an announcement from it as well, but some of the hot topics that are coming up is very vital to what we are doing in our department as well, in our School Division as well. And if you're interested, please, because some of them are costly, and if we could do it as a group, it would be better served. Thank you so much. We'll be sending an email. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. So that concludes our formal meeting.